All right. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 9, 2024. We're going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future capable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting, and we will rise for the closing remarks.
...the blood of the United States of America, the superior blood for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our agenda tonight. We have the school choice hearing and the FY25 school department budget hearing. So I'm going to start, please, by requesting a motion to open the school choice hearing. So moved.
Second.
Okay. And I'm going to hand it over to you to give a little bit of context, Dr. Bailey.
Yep, so this is a hearing. I don't know if anybody signed up to speak regarding this, but as you know, several districts can't.
Like, I already sort of, I didn't do a roll call to open this school choice meeting. So I do need to take a roll call vote to officially open the meeting.
Okay. Mrs. Downey?
Yes, I'm here.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Howcrapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Puddey?
Right, great. Sorry, Dr. Bailey, please carry on.
Yep, so as you know, some districts take in students from other districts, and that does generate some revenue. It's $5,000 for each student. I've done a lot of research on this. While we would love to be able to, you know, bring in diversity and bring in some revenue, once the students are in our district, we would be on the hook for tuition for high schools. They would follow our students. And I just don't feel that we can afford that. So my recommendation tonight is going to be to continue, like we've done in the past, to vote against participation in the school choice program for the upcoming academic years. And just know that we've been extremely thoughtful about it. We've had legal counsel looking into things, the state looking into things, just to see if there was anything different that we should be doing. And at this point, we are going to recommend, I'm going to recommend that we refrain from participating at this time. And the biggest reason is we would be on the hook for high school tuitions, and I don't think our budget could handle that.
Okay. So if I could request a motion, please, to decline moving forward with school choice.
Yeah, this one?
Yep, after I do, just do my motion first, then we'll open up the comments and questions. If I could have a motion, so moved. Okay.
I tend to support the superintendent's recommendation. However, I think for next year, if we revisit this issue, there are guidelines that did that legislation, you know, with that program, that what, since we had known we, one of the few tuition schools, you know, high schools and commonwealth, whether, you know, whether these, you know, seek a change for us, you know what I'm saying? I find if state bureaucracies, basically, they're always good to tell you what you can do. But, you know, when they get something new, they stall. And, you know, so, so I think we, you know, I think we've got to be creative. You know, we are, you know, facing some decline in, you know, registration of children enrollment. We have to think ways of continuing our income stream as well as, you know, employment of our staff. If we go into too many, you know, lose too many students, we, you know, we affect our supportive staff, our auxiliary staff, which in turn affects the quality of our output. So I would like to, you know, visit next year. I know we've got a lot on our plate coming this year, but I think we need to stay on turn as far as keeping our enrollments up and as well as our income stream up. So I think that was a, by the way, talking about enrollment, you know, it seems that we're going to face with a great deal of drop off fertility, fertility rates as far as people having children. And so therefore, we're going to be facing some, all school districts might be facing some shortages of, you know, of children. And therefore, how do we, how do we kind of realign our budgets and output? So I want to just add that to the, I mean, I've talked too long, but I want to add that, that type of thing, revisit this, see waivers maybe, and all things like that.
It's something that we are discussing with legal counsel right now. Nothing that can happen for this moment, but it is something that we're exploring just to see.
Right.
Yep.
So we're on the same page.
Right, and just to make sure the public knows that this is an annual vote. So it is.
It's an annual vote because we are choosing not to participate in school choice.
Right, so it is revisited every year.
Yes.
And we should, to your point, Mr. Howcrapp, look at all the variables when we make these decisions. So, point well taken. So, do we have a second on the table? If I could get a second for that motion of not participating?
Well, now, cheer up. The vote would be in the regular public agenda. The hearing is just the discussion.
Oh, okay, my apologies.
That's okay.
Okay, so we take that vote later in the meeting?
Yep.
All righty.
So if anybody else has anything else they want to discuss?
Okay.
I know that, I believe no one signed up for delegation regarding this hearing.
Yeah, briefly.
So, yeah, please do. So when it comes to school choice, it's opened up to everyone. It is a lottery. So if we're talking about budgets, we do need to consider special education coming into our district as well, which could cost you much more money. And we also want to think of the other side. And we don't want to take away from our students that live in the Ushna to bring in other students that might need special needs, which again, is a lottery system, so there's no discrimination. So we do have to look at all the factors.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we'll take that, this is our vote later in the agenda.
Yep.
So if I could have a motion, please, to close the public hearing for school choice? On a motion?
Sure.
Okay, and we're going to do a roll call, so all those in favor? Closing. Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcrapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Puddey?
Yes.
Okay. So if I could now have a motion, please, to open the proposed FY25 school department budget hearing? So, so moved. Okay, and we'll take a roll call vote. Just there. If I could have a roll call vote, please, to adjourn the hearing? Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcrapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Puddey?
Yes.
Okay, and once again, I will hand it over to Dr. Bailey.
Okay, for this budget hearing, I'm going to ask Mr. McIntyre to facilitate the discussion.
Good evening, School Committee. Good evening, public. For those watching, listening, tuning in at a later point in time, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide, you know, the balcony view on the budget at this point in time. This is required by law, and it's an opportunity for you to learn a little bit more about the budget and to provide feedback. So without further ado, the budget supports our mission and our vision. The mission of the Kushtna Public Schools in partnership with staff, parents, and community is to promote student success, growth, and learning in a safe and supportive environment. The vision of the Kushtna Public Schools is to be a high-performing school district where all students are afforded the opportunities to realize their potential. Within our model, we have our strategic objectives, which are achieving academic excellence for all students, creating thriving social and emotional learning experiences for all students, and strengthening partnerships with parents and the larger community, which again, every line item in our budget supports one of these objectives. The process is really a three-step process. We begin with a budget basis, which is called the baseline budget. So that's the cost of the services provided last year. And the year you're building the budget, so the cost of providing services in FY24, you start with those services. You increase and adjust the cost according to, you know, going rates, inflations, funding, things like that. And then you analyze the budget. We tend to do it from the bottom up. You know, we solicit feedback from our teachers, our principals, our leadership team, our central office team, and bring it up to the superintendent, who then recommends the budget to the school committee. During that time, we look at anything to see where we can gain efficiencies or maybe we need to implement more services, and just look for identified growth and continued improvements. So currently, where our budget stands, the budget baseline, not the final recommended budget, but the budget baseline would be $16,402,174. And that would be the cost to provide the same level of services in FY25 as in FY24. Those services are broken down by DESI category in this instance, so personnel expenses, administrative, instruction, people services, operations and maintenance, community services, and programs with other school districts. As you can see, through building the baseline, there were fixed costs, fixed increases. $519,000 related to personnel. Administrative costs, we were able to provide level services while decreasing the budget approximately $18,000. Instruction, $200,000. A factor of that was moving a contracted service into a personnel position. People services increased almost $200,000. And then operations and maintenance decreased $60,000. Approximately community services, $6,000. And programs with other school districts, which is related to our high school tuitions and transportation, a decrease of approximately $86,000. Most of our budget are fixed costs. So most of those factors that I just mentioned, the categories that I just mentioned are fixed. So we have our salaries of wages, where we employ approximately 145 faculty and staff, and support staff. Many of them are union, union employees, and this makes up approximately 62% of our budget. We have fixed costs in technology as we are one-to-one district. We need a safe and reliable system and infrastructure, and much of our curriculum is technology-based. We have curriculum that becomes fixed over time as we prepay for subscriptions and memberships and things like that. And again, most of it's technological, so we pay for licenses that would otherwise expire. So we need fixed costs related to curriculum to continue to have access to this curriculum. That provides our central guide and consistency throughout our teaching and our learning classroom to classroom. Special education costs is a mandated. Special education students need equitable access to the same learning that everyone else has access to. And then we further have to provide the same level of services that, as we did for last year, to maintain effort in the eligible for other grant funding opportunities that help supplement some of those costs. Transportation, again, required by law. We need to transport our students to and from school with certain restrictions. That makes up approximately 8% of our budget. And then because we have no high school, we have tuition contracts to Bedford High School and Fairview High School, where we have tuition-based costs that relate to 20% of our overall budget. And then further, you know, we are a school district, so we have two buildings that we need to maintain, make sure we can keep the lights on, the heat on, and clean for healthy and happy learning. So after we adjusted and analyzed the baseline budget, there were increased costs of $228,000. These would be additions to our local budget, and those represent a maintenance worker position that was once funded through the ESAR grant, and curriculum renewal. So again, curriculum becomes a fixed cost in our district because of our model. Some of those curriculum components expired, and now we're looking to renew. That brings our grand total budget to $16,630,182. And that is what the superintendent at this time is recommending be our budget for fiscal '25. This exhibit, which, by the way, you can access all this material on our website to see the figures a little bit better, but this breaks down, again, the costs associated with our budget and shows that ultimately fixed costs do represent 90% of our budget and over 3.89% of what is actually only a 3.5% increase between fiscal '24 and '25. So that means outside mandated costs, we were able to reduce our budget almost a quarter of a percentage. Funding opportunities, this is important because for a handful of years now, in relation to the pandemic, we receive ESAR funds. So a lot of communities, districts, whoever it may be, were advised not to, not to put local budget expenses into these funding sources because you essentially create a cliff for yourselves. So we've done a good job of not doing that initially. We put a maintenance worker in ESAR, and we realized the value of that worker, that it does provide significant value and saves us costs on contracted services that it should be the local. Another change that came to local was a school website that originated in ESAR, but the costs are awash because we were able to cut other services now that are provided by this website. On top of town funds, we also receive circuit breaker funds, E-rate technological funds, and miscellaneous state and federal grants that also help supplement our budget. Again, closing remarks. Building the budget is really a team process. Next steps, as we continue through this process and next steps, we will continue to receive feedback from the budget subcommittee, the town, the public, the leadership team, and so on and so forth. The budget maintains level services, which is important to us every year. We don't want to cut services. We want to make sure we maintain our services or provide what is necessary. So this budget maintains level services and looks forward to growth opportunities. We strongly encourage staff, parents, and members of the community to engage and remain in the budget process. So once the school committee adopts a budget, which we anticipate being next school committee meeting in May, whatever that budget may be, we ask for your support. We ask for you to show up to town, town meeting, and help us vote for this budget because truly, this is, this is what we need to support our students, to support our faculty, and to provide an education to the community, that the students of the community. Every cut has a figure beside it. So, you know, level services is a $572,000 increase in 20 years. If it was a 0% increase, you know, it would be a $572,000 deficit of services, if you will. Those figures can go all the way up to 3.5%. For instance, a 3% increase would still provide $90,000 deficit of services to us. So if we don't get the support of the town, we don't get the support of the other committees, and they ask us to reduce our budget even further, what does this mean? We're potentially looking at reduction in staffing, overhauls of some of our programming that we've made such progress, looking at implementing student fees, elimination of certain activities, and just general overall setbacks. So we don't want to approach that territory. Otherwise, again, all this information is available on our website. You can always contact the superintendent's office, the business office, if you have any questions specific to this budget. And thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. At this time, we can open it up to any comments or questions.
I feel like I'd like to read this with Mr. John.
I was just going to say, I do want to thank Mrs. Gomes, Mr. Howcrapp, for your participation on the budget subcommittee. This is a very busy time of year for the school committee and putting these budgets together takes a lot of work, along with Dr. Bailey and Mr. McIntyre. So thank you, everyone, for all your efforts in putting this together and tweaking those numbers, I know, so many times.
And I know the principals and all the leadership team work so hard, you know, getting the numbers to be, you know, equitable and make sure that we're not overspending, which is very important, right? Because we're not only protecting our students, we're also protecting our town as well. So I'd like to thank everybody for all their help and, again, asking for all the support from the town to, at-town meeting, to be there and to support our budget, whatever we end up, you know, going with in May.
Right, Sarah, Mrs. Gomes. Is there another, because we had a meeting with the town recently. Is there another check-in between subcommittee and the town? What's like the next steps leading up to the meeting?
Yes, so the fun part is, in all reality, is that nobody knows exactly what we're going to get from state and what we're going to get from federal. And so we're still guessing at numbers. And it's possible that we don't know our numbers until, like, the end of May. Sometimes they were even saying, like, July and August. And you're like, wait a second. So we're guessing at these numbers. We're going to, you know, cut down, cut down, set down, and then come to find out, all of a sudden, there's, you know, $3 million, you know, something crazy at the end that we were not expecting. So our plan was, and everybody agreed, was just to postpone as much as we can. And that's why we pushed the final thought for the school committee to our May meeting, because that's literally a month before the town meeting, because they do need to, you know, get the figures in the books. However, we are hoping that we have an idea of what the state and the federal is giving us right before then. And with the subcommittee, John and I are ready to meet as many times as needed once those figures do start coming in, if they are different from what we expected.
That's okay, please.
Mrs. Gomes, number one, with the, you know, maybe with the selectmen and the finance committee. Other departments have really not formally reviewed the budget yet. We didn't know what is really, you know, neither they, what is really needed in the final round. Secondly of all, due to a glitch in the reimbursement field where the state Department of Education had planned for inflation of only 4.5%, when inflation actually in schools was at 8%. Or it might have been the ways and means. I don't know what it came about. So they may be revisiting that issue, which will in turn affect, you know, affect our budget, so to speak. So that's where we stand right now. Now, the state was having a shortfall in receipts until last month. Now they, you know, now they took it off $128 million in addition to what they did not anticipate coming in. So, you know, they made that future a little brighter. So I says, well, let's wait, let's wait and see and go with the budget that we now have, which has been, you know, really streamlined, and see what happens. So I think that answers the questions.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, so any other comments or questions related to FY25 budget? No? Okay, and with that, I'm going to request a motion, please, to close the proposed budget public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and then we'll take a roll call vote. Roll call vote to close the meeting and return to open. We are returning. We have to open the school committee meeting. Yeah. Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcrapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Puddey?
Yes.
And I do want to acknowledge that we did see, after we closed the school choice hearing, someone in delegation wanting to speak. So I do want to acknowledge that individual. And we can't reopen the school choice hearing, but what we can do is welcome you to give a public comment. Once we open the school committee meeting later, there is a delegation as part of the meeting. So welcome you to make that comment then. So with that, I do want to now request a motion, please, to open our regular school committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, and if I could take a roll call vote, please. Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcrapp?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, we do have executive session this evening, so we are going to move right into executive session. So if I could have a motion, please, to move into executive session to discuss the following, with intent to return to the public session, to conduct strategy sessions of preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices for strategies with respect thereto safety and security of staff and students. If I could request that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second? One second. Okay, and we can now move into executive session. Roll call. Do we need that roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcrapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Puddey?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to resume our regular school committee meeting. So we're going to move right into our first item, which is the consent agenda. So just get everybody all caught up to where you need to be. And so what I'd like to do is request a motion to approve the minutes of March 5, which is 2024, and the minutes of the meeting on 3/20/25 at all perils and warrants. If you remember, the consent agenda loops everything into one. So if I can have a motion, please? So moved. And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have anyone on delegation still here to speak? I know we had this one, but I think enough. That was it. Okay, great, all right. So no, so we'll move forward. There's no old business, moving into new business. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Bailey to get us started.
All right, thank you. And I'll move it right along. Our first item on the agenda, I'd like to call up Mrs. Chesney. And she is just going to review with us the AES violin program, which was funded by the Artist in Residency Grant. So I'd like to invite Mrs. Chesney, and if anybody else?
No, we don't have anybody else.
Okay.
Madam Chairwoman, School Committee, thank you so much for having me. One of the highlights this past year has been our program with an artist in residence, Jeff Angeli. And here is Jeff right here. He is someone that you might already know. He has been working in the South Coast Music Group. He calls it "South Coast Lessons." He's been a musician in the South Coast area for over 20 years. And he, along with the facilitator Beth Dupree, came up with the idea of introducing violin skills to third-grade students. So they've been actually doing that for a while. Just so you know, that the program is definitely connected to our district plan. We want to make sure that students are engaged in higher-order thinking. Music is a great way for that, to develop their sense of belonging and build emotional competencies. And of course, we were also partnering with a community member. And I just looked, as we were thinking about this, research really does show quite a lot of benefit from learning a musical instrument, starting with how someone feels about themselves, even things like executive functioning, and of course, as you might expect, language skills and reading. I did not expect the pro-social skills, but that does kind of make sense when you're working in an orchestra. The way that we were able to get it's about a $6,000 value. We were chosen by Jeff to bring this into the program. We went to Mr. McIntyre and Dr. Bailey to make sure that we were all set to be approved. And it's been 40 sessions with every third-grade class. So every class has been regularly working with Mr. Angeli. He provided practice violin to the students as well. And here's some pictures of them playing. And, okay, so just before I play the clip of them playing, my kids did strings. It can be a little rough at the beginning, but it's really good, okay? I just want to be, I just want to manage the expectations.
One, two, three, go.
Yeah. The classic can actually use the bows, which is not usually, he kind of accelerated their learning, because they don't usually use bows for like six months at least. But they could, you could hear the tones there. That's really excellent work on his part and on the kids' part, too. And are there any questions about the program?
No questions. I just think it's so fantastic, just to offer more choices to the kids to experience more instruments, it's just great.
I was just really glad for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next one is school choice, is just to continue that conversation from earlier, the hearing. I'll keep it brief, but my recommendation to the school committee is that you vote against our school districts' participation in the school choice program for the upcoming academic year. I believe it's in the best interest of our school community to refrain from participating in the program at this time.
Okay. If I could have a motion, please, to follow the superintendent's recommendation against our school's participation in the school choice program.
So moved.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next thing is the agreement from REEDS. Oh, no, it's the annual appointment of the superintendent to the Board of Directors for REEDS. So this is something that we do every year. You would just need to have a vote, which allows me to serve on this Board of Directors for the REEDS Collaborative.
So I'd like to request a motion to appoint Dr. Bailey to serve as the Acushnet School District's representative on the REEDS Board of Directors. Can I make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one's also associated with the REEDS Collaborative. It's the amendment to the agreement. You've had it in your packets, and it just requires a school committee vote, and then a signature from the chair.
I'd like to request a motion to approve the REEDS Collaborative Agreement Amendment as written.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next thing is, I wanted to bring up a regionalization study to the committee. As you know, I've been talking about the fact that, you know, to run the school district, we can't continue to run it fighting with the town every year for money, right? So we want to look into the possibility of what are our possibilities, and that a study would do that for us. And I was hoping, I've talked to Mrs. Gomes about chairing that committee, but that I would love to have a vote from the committee, and then anyone who, from the committee who wanted to be on that committee. But this is something that potentially could take three to five years, you know, to see it through. But the study would be a start to see what the options are, and, you know, if it's fiscally sound for the district, et cetera, and to explore different options. And I know Mrs. Gomes probably wants to speak to this matter.
Yep, so I've done this before. I did it about nine years ago. So just to give you an idea, the first thing we need to do is establish grants to pay for the study. That's the first thing, so it's not costing the towns any money. And then we would reach out to multiple towns, whoever we were interested in, not just one, but multiple, and work collaboratively with them on the grant for the study for each additional district. And that in a nutshell is like the first year, year and a half. And then once you get all that documentation, there's multiple steps for the school committees to vote on, for the towns to vote on. There's multiple layers to make sure everything is properly embedded. And it can stop at any time when, when either the towns or the school districts decide that it's not worthwhile anymore, while we're moving forward.
Okay.
I think I'll just emphasize, this is a study. This is to get information. I know our town several years ago attempted to do a study around regionalization. It did not move forward. But, you know, this is just to give us the information we need to make sound decisions with other school districts. So long process ahead of us, starting one step at a time, but this vote would allow us to get the process started. So with that, I'd like to request a motion to move forward with the regionalization study and appoint Sarah Gomes as the chairperson of this committee. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Any further comments, questions about the process?
How do we, how are we dealing with the collect, who wants to be on, so we establish this, and we deal with that piece?
Yep.
And I would leave that to Mrs. Gomes.
Mm-hmm. So I believe the first step, and I'm going to double check with Mass to see if things have changed, but it's publicly announced. And then we need to make sure that we have at least a town member, we have a school committee member, union representation is usually asked, your parents, so it's all inclusive to make sure everybody's, and it'll be advertised as well.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor as well as a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
No, not.
Great.
I would be willing to participate on that committee.
That's great.
We can.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. We've got two, but that's great.
We can have a broader discussion.
That's fine, that's great. All right, so.
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Missler up to give us a technology update.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee members, Dr. Bailey. I'll try to be brief on this. Quick one, we did a camera system update. It's been needing for a few years now, so we took care of that recently, which ensures that we're secure, our system's up to date, can handle anything we put on it, and offers us a few extra bells and whistles. For email, there's a part of me that wants to get super techy on you guys, but I'm going to save you for that. Long story short, we've added an extra piece of security, no cost to us. But it's something that a lot of businesses and districts don't do. We have it in place now, it's up and running perfectly with no cost. MCAS, kudos to our principals of both buildings. MCAS has been going off swimmingly. Students have been doing a great job bringing in their devices charged. We let them know through our smore, you know, please have devices charged and ready to go. It's been great. The last one I just have is, it's been business as usual. And one part of the job we don't talk about a lot, but it's updating, rolling out security patches, all that, to make sure that we're secure. And just to remind everyone, for the last year and three quarters that I've been here, we no longer utilize outside vendors. So our savings is from within. All the department, all the whole tech department handles all of this internally. So we've been, just to say, kudos to them, they've been doing a great job. And, yeah, we're much more secure now than we've ever been.
Fantastic. Great, thank you for that update.
Thank you, Mr. Missler.
Clear, thank you.
All right, and then other items that may not have been anticipated, I just wanted to review a couple of things very quickly. We had the solar eclipse yesterday, and we had the majority of students from both buildings participate in a viewing. Very few children were not able to. And if they were not able to, there was a live stream going on in the classrooms inside the building. But it was such a great learning opportunity for our students, because many of the teachers had done lessons prior. And I just have to say and give kudos to our teachers, as well as our students, that everything went off without a hitch. So it was really a great day. The second thing, we were just notified tonight of a grant that we received for a new curriculum for our eighth grade civics. This is the DKP, which is the Democratic Knowledge Project, through the One to Eight Foundation. And I would like to thank Ms. Rigori, Michelle Sylvia, the principal at Ford Middle School, Karen Bentley, a teacher here at Ford Middle School, and Christine Demers, the coach. They've all been pretty instrumental in getting this through. But the grant includes curriculum, PD, there's quite a bit. It totals $11,468 over the next three years for PD. And the only thing that the district, our annual cost will be $300 annually for program participation. But this is very similar to the PD, the extensive PD that we went through for the Open Sai Ed program, which was the free curriculum that we found out about through our professional development that we go to, Ms. Rigori and myself. But this DKP curriculum empowers student voice through agency. It promotes sustained inquiry and critical thinking. It's aligned to the new civics standards, and it helps with the civics projects. So that's just a little announcement. Obviously, as we get into things, you'll see presentations along the way, but I did want to let you know that we were just notified tonight that we received this grant.
It's so great. For so long, civics have not been a part of our, you know, programming, and so this is really great, really, really great.
I just have a question. Is the civics curriculum, would you consider it neutral in politics and in everything that's going on in the world?
I would say yes, I would say it's standards-based. So whatever the standards are, yes.
Okay. I just, again, as a parent, I want to make sure that everything that's taught in the school is considered completely neutral, not one-sided or the other side when it comes to especially civics.
I would say that if you have a specific question, to contact Ms. Rigori.
Okay, perfect.
And then you can have a specific conversation.
Perfect.
The last thing I want to go over is, we sent out a survey to our families. We're looking at a company called Alphabetz to provide before and after-school programming. And this is just a quick introduction to that, because they offer enrichment activities. But within the first 30 minutes of the survey, we had an overwhelming response, which was wonderful to see. So we're going to continue exploring that. We have a team that we will send out to area schools that have Alphabetz. But we think it's been needed. It's something we want to explore fully, and if we can get this off the ground, we look to do it for the next school year. But I will keep you all informed. I just wanted to let you know that we did send out that survey, and we got quite a great response, which was great. And that is all I have for tonight.
All right, so then we will invite Mr. McIntyre for the business manager update to the podium, please.
Chairperson Downing, School Committee, thank you for your time. Business manager report update. So budget, FY24 budget, the numbers that you see in front of you are through March, so that's three quarters of the year. Coincidentally, just kidding, it's not a coincidence, about 25% of our budget remains for the last quarter of the year. Most of that is salaries, as you can see in the AES, FMS, and district lines, while many of the other lines are spent down or encumbered to be spent down with little to no funds remaining. We have a targeted budget freeze at the end of April, beginning of May, so that we can kind of cut off expenses for the rest of the year. At that point, you know, outside and on emergencies, everything should be ordered or in hands or on campus or spoken for through an encumbrance. And that will let us analyze if we have any serious budget savings or deficits and what we will do with those funds. As far as, oh, and coincidentally, if there will be transfers, which I can tell you there will be, between categories, those will be presented in May or June for school committee vote as required. You know, some of this is trying because of the vacancies of the town accountant, you know, we kind of have to get creative with where we're recording some of our grant expenses and local expenses, because of account numbers not being created, so on and so forth. It's all tracked on a spreadsheet. We have it handled, but it's going to cost them back and work and cleaning up. So just kind of wanted to address that. FY25 budget, so we've met quite a bit with, again, people of all layers of the team, budget subcommittee especially, I think we've been occupying a lot of your time, so thank you to those members. But the reason we're doing so, again, is because the lack of clarity on the state and federal funds that the town's going to receive, and we don't want to make any sacrifices that we don't need to. So we're opening, we're keeping the budget open essentially till May for school committee vote, so that we can work with all those involved, and get some clarity on where our numbers truly need to be without making sacrifices to our services or our staffing. And, you know, we'll go from there. And one piece of leaving the budget open and shared with these different departments and avenues is the ability to review and make changes. So we have made changes since the budget was presented back in February. You know, one of the more significant changes we just caught was a figure, an offset figure that I was carrying for Circuit Breaker, that I was carrying at a higher number than what was actually going to be received next year. But we were able to catch it now before the budget became final, and it became a shortfall for us. So you have notes on that there. Please direct any questions, if you have them related to that instance, and potentially funding that gap through our special education stabilization. But that was all discussed with budget subcommittee in detail. Facilities, so again, this is a project that excites me, but it takes some time, and it's, you know, very task-based and a lot of literature to read. So that's some energy management services, request for qualifications, I've mentioned a few school committees in a row now. So we received four submissions from Energy Efficient Investments, Inc., Energy Management Consultants, Siemens, and Train. Some of these packets are 400 pages, you know, 300 pages, 200 pages. So we have an evaluation committee, if you will, of myself, Superintendent Bailey, and our facilities director, along with our owner's agent that was hired specific to this project, to evaluate these vendors and their bid submissions, and determine the best fit for our school, where we can maximize energy savings, grants, tax-exempt leases, things like that, and get these buildings up to snuff. Ultimately, what this project does, just to repeat again what I have in the past, it looks at our building envelope. It looks at where we can save, you know, on energy costs. It works towards the town's green initiative, as we're a green community. It looks to save us money while updating our mechanical gear, our generators, our boilers, our air quality control systems, things like that. So it's a very thorough process, and we're going to get an investment-grade audit on this entire thing with a report with monetary values tied to each upgrade and, you know, a condition of each system. So it's very interesting, it's going to be very thorough, but more reason not to rush through it and to do it the right way, because there will be information that we can hold on to and take advantage of for 20-plus years.
Can you remind us what the timeline is, once you've selected?
Yeah, so it depends on who is selected, but, you know, on-side conversations with the vendors that have submitted bids, some of them are ready to go with the investment-grade audit as soon as we select them. So then they'll come in, and it'll take, you know, a month or two for them to go through all the components of our buildings. You know, they look at doors, the exterior doors, windows, the brick, again, to as big as boilers, our heating systems, things like that. So they look at everything. And a lot of that relies on us getting them materials timely, too, so as-built schematics, access to the buildings. But they'll work on our off-hours, and, you know, generally that takes a month or two to come up with an investment-grade audit. From there, you kind of negotiate terms, you look at the reports, you work with the owner's agent, who is, again, you know, hired by us, they're on our side. And you come up with a contract to move forward at an agreed-upon rate with energy guarantees that if they're not met, we get paid by the vendor, so that we don't have to incur a cost, because their systems weren't as efficient as they expected. And, you know, in that timeline, too, between the grade audit and the contract, is measurements and verifications, which they'll run systems, they'll put together formulas on spreadsheets that kind of, to portray what a newly implemented system would kind of mirror, and see what kind of energy it would use and savings they would have. And again, they come up with figures that we then work with the town's financial advisors and the town to see how it will be funded. And there's a plethora of opportunities, again, through green communities, through just infrastructure grants, through tax-exempt bonds, through bands. It's really up to us at that point on what we can afford. And then we get moving, make some changes. So, again, it's exciting, but it's cumbersome, and it takes time. Moving on to food services, so again, just another highlight of that program, which is the farm-to-school highlight. So we were able to secure funds, not a ton, but we're making the most of them, you know, $6,000 from USDA Northeast Food for Schools. And the program is to help increase purchasing locally. So again, on the sheets in front of you, we listed some of the farms that we've used, Jonathan Sprouts in Rochester, Joe Shikowski in Hadley, Little Leaf Farms in Devens, and Backyard Farms in Madison. And with those farms, we were able to get, you know, locally grown and sourced cranberries, butternut squash french fries that we taste-tested with the kids, that they had a blast with. I know our principals can allude to that. We've done lettuce for farm-fresh salads, which we've added to our menu. And, you know, with that, we've added tomatoes that we were able to source from Madison. So it's fun, we get the kids involved, but we're also, you know, reaching goals that we set last June, and, you know, having a more nutritious menu, items, options, broadening the horizons of students and what they're willing to taste, and getting them excited about trying new foods, other than, you know, chicken patties and french fries or whatever it is.
So I know in one of my recent focus groups, I met with third grade, and they had a request to have soup on the menu. So next week, I believe, there's homemade chicken soup noodle soup coming. soup noodle soup coming, and that was because of student voice, so we're able to accommodate in that way. Not the first time, so I do want to give our nutrition director kudos.
Yeah. Big shout-out to Shelley Mello, our nutrition director, as well as the kitchen staff, because they have to be able to change with these changes, and, you know, we lost Dee Silva to retirement in, in the winter, and Shelley's kind of been filling that role at both schools, and everyone's just really coming together as a team and working well together and, and learning the new processes and procedures and, and trying these new menu items, and all the feedback internally and externally have been positive, so, again, another positive for us, and it's exciting change, so. We look forward to presenting again in June with an updated presentation, goals we've met, and feedback from you on, on where you expect us to go beyond that. Any questions on any of the items?
Thank you for the update.
Great, thank you.
All right. I would welcome at this time, any reports from school committee members? No? Nothing? All right, and there's a number of communications noted there for you to read at your convenience. Our next school committee meeting is May 7th, correct? Right back here in the library, and if there is nothing further, I would request a motion to adjourn. Okay?
Okay.
Roll call vote to officially close out.
Four eight five.
Right for four eight five, just for you, Mr. Howe-Crawford. Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howe-Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudow?
Yes.
Bye.